Tyler, nice to meet you. I'm Tyler, nice to meet you. I go to Newton North. Oh, really? Cool. Yes, he's a 10th grader. He's in special education, so he's in classes. Yes, I think I know. Yes, I think I know. Hi, it's nice to meet you. Oh, you spoke in Spring Ward. Thank you. I'm a junior this year. Good to be here.
Hello, everybody. Apologies, we're running late tonight. We just got out of a previous meeting. We'll begin in a few minutes. All right, good evening, everybody. Let's call through order.
Recording in progress.
For eighth, twenty twenty five, opening of the Newton School Committee. We will start tonight, as we do every night, with the Pledge of Allegiance. Unfortunately, we do not have a fifth grader here with us tonight, who usually leads us in the pledge, so playing the role of a fifth grader will be myself. So if there's no obligation to participate, but if you are able and willing, please rise for the pledge. We moved our flag, too.
Pledge of Allegiance, through the flag, in the United States of America. In two hundred and seventy, where it stands, one nation under God.
All right, thank you. We are going to have our public comment, and then we're going to go just a little bit out of order with the superintendent's update before we move to the consent agenda. There are some new folks that Dr. Nolan would like to introduce, and we can not make them stay too long. So let's have our public comment first. We only have one speaker tonight. That is Enrique Rosero.
Maybe one second.
Since we're in a new year, I'll state that you shouldn't expect a real-time response from us when you make public comments. We always appreciate the opportunity for people to share their views, but it is not a format in which we will respond. You have three minutes to make a public comment. After two and a half minutes, Vice Chair Prender will give you the thirty-second warning. And if you could just start by stating your name and address, please.
Enrique Rosero, nineteen Garland. Exciting new year, school year underway. We have an eighth grader, last year of middle school. Her anxiety was over the roof. Who were being her team? What teachers she'd get? She settled in quickly, though. She felt welcome and encouraged by her teachers, and she's eager to excel. I'm here to speak about the treatment our teachers are receiving. I'm not here to defend the union. I'm here to reflect on what must be like to feel we don't have their back. I received a mass email from an anonymous account from a group I never subscribe to, pushing a dubious narrative, seeking yet again to discredit our teachers and their union. Local groups in social media are filled with miserable provocateurs hiding in anonymity. They have been peddling harmful anti-union fake news that teachers are A, beholden to a hate group, and B, despite of all evidence to the contrary, that they care not for our kids. This is wrong. It is a shame that is being done for political expediency. Candidates some of you endorse expect to gain from this propaganda, but we all lose in the long run. Some of you have worked really hard at repairing relationships with educators, and I thank you for that. It is not easy to mend fences and regain trust. Destroying trust is simple. Rebuilding it isn't. That's why I'm asking you whether putting your name behind campaigns that have embraced this scorched earth strategy undermines what you have tried so hard to accomplish. My time in corporate America, I occasionally felt unappreciated. It is draining. Lack of respect leads to burnout. However, I have not ever experienced the level of open hostility, disdain, mistrust, and constant antagonism our teacher face from these people. This committee is entrusted with safeguarding excellence in our schools. Our teachers enable that excellence. The question for you is, will these tactics improve the conditions of our kids? Or will the careless and relentless bashing of the two thousand employees of our district accomplish just the opposite, regardless of who wins the election? And so, what are you going to do? Would you condone the attacks on the professionals who work tirelessly at supporting our children? Would you speak up in defense of NPS? Or will you choose to play the type of divisive politics trolls and weak leaders are trying to push us into? We live in trying times. Our values are tested. I want to believe Newton has not normalized mistreating our educators. So I'm hoping you rise to the occasion. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That was our only public comment for tonight, so we will move to our superintendent's update.
Thank you. First, Mr. Chairman, I'll just start with a brief start of the school update. We had a strong opening with smooth focus for operations, but also a strong focus on belonging, care, and the dignity of every student. We completed summer work. One hundred and thirty-plus educators engaged in three hundred and eighteen days of curriculum and professional learning, advancing literacy, math, science, social, emotional learning, and equity, all tied to the portrait of our learner. We welcomed new leaders and staff, and you will meet some of them this evening, which include a hundred new teachers across the school system. In terms of facilities and operations, we completed two hundred and eighty-plus summer projects, including roof replacements, bathroom renovations, and solar readiness projects, especially here at Ed Center. So now you can park here in the winter, and the snow won't get on your car. Enrollment in classrooms, eleven thousand three hundred and forty-five students enrolled, and our average class size is nineteen students. We do have some bus driver shortages, but solutions are being implemented, and all of our bus routes have been covered. Our family welcome center opened this summer, and the new hub has already assisted over one hundred families with enrollment, attendance, and resources since July. We launched a breakfast after the bell program in three new elementary schools, so students start the day nourished. We expanded our supports for MEKO students, particularly at the elementary level. The twenty-five, twenty-six school year is off to an inspiring start, and across our schools, teachers and leaders opened the doors with care and commitment to our students. We are so proud to launch this year and to share it with you. And in the room with me this evening are several leaders who I'd like to introduce to the public and to you. And so first, I'll ask all of our new directors in the district, and they span many different departments, so let's start with teaching and learning, and then head to Student Services from there. You have to come up here. Teaching and Learning, let's go.
I've had the honor and privilege to...
I've had the honor and privilege the last couple of weeks to get to know this fine group of highly educated professionals who are leading the charge in curriculum for Newton Public Schools. And if I could introduce each one of them, some of them are faces you've seen before but have now taken over in a full director position. So for science, we have Ms. Elizabeth Butler Everett. Our new Director of ELA, all the way from California, Mr. David Cloker. Social Studies, we have Ms. Eva Hughes, and she's also overseeing Fine and Performing Arts. And then other Humanities Director overseeing PE Health and Wellness, as well as World Languages, we have Tracy Sakalowski. And then our new Director of Professional Learning, Mr. Matthew Coleman. And then finally, someone who's been with us a long time, but now is the Director of Math for the District, Ms. Jennifer Shore. So thank you. All right, next, Casey Noe Miller, our Assistant Superintendent for Student Services. We'll introduce the new Student Services staff. Good evening. All right, I am thrilled to introduce to the committee the new Student Services leaders to NPS. We do have some new folks who moved to different positions, but these are folks who have taken on the role of being a leader in Student Services. So I will present to you first Dr. Jordana Lasparance, who is an Assistant Principal for Student Services at Bigelow. We have Ms. Sophia Briam-Mizeles, who is the Coordinator for Secondary SEL and Mental Health. We have Ms. Mary Beth Kincaid, who's an Assistant Director for Elementary Special Education. Ms. Lindsay Mueller, also an Assistant Director for Elementary Special Education. Ms. Sarah Ladner Apollo, Director of Central High School. And we have Ms. Jenny Kang, who's an Assistant Director, Assistant Department Head at Newton North for Special Education. Congratulations. Don't see Dr. Roundtree, so I'm gonna... Oh, are you there? Oh, Jean, would you like to introduce our new Athletic Director, please?
She just hides.
So hard to see you back there, Jean. Tiny guy.
So, good evening, everyone. My name is Jean Roundtree. I'm the Assistant Superintendent for Secondary Education and Special Programs. Great to be here with you, beginning of the school year. And I am very excited to introduce the brand-new Athletic Director at Newton South High School, Mr. Keith Davy, who comes to us from the New York area. And so we're very pleased to have him, and he's already making a really big impact.
Congratulations. Dr. Roundtree and I enjoyed North versus South Day that Keith and Mike Jackson, our North Athletic Director, put on on Saturday, minus the tornado as an extra feature. But congratulations, it was a great day. All right, now I'll ask Dr. Aisha Barg, our Elementary Assistant Superintendent, to introduce our three new elementary principals.
It's pretty exciting. It is my great pleasure to welcome three new members to the Elementary Principal Team. With me tonight, I'd like to first introduce Dr. Simone Catraba, the new Principal of Burr Elementary, and I might add, she is here on her birthday. Next up, I'm pleased to welcome Ms. Jamie Yadoff as the Principal of Memorial Spalding.
Yeah.
And finally, coming back to Newton after having been a longtime educator here and serving as an Assistant Principal at Service Elementary, left us for a couple of years. Now Kate O'Leary is back as the Principal of Service Elementary.
Okay. The Chair has allowed me to move to our first item for discussion, which is calling up Principals Mark Nardelli and Maura Morris to let you both know about the transition of the Horace Mann and Lincoln Elliott schools and how that's all going so far. Huge milestones for us as a school system, and these two leaders have been pivotal in the smooth transition and in supporting our students and staff.
Hi, everybody. My name is Mark Nardelli. I'm here at the new Horace Mann at one ninety-one Pearl Street. I was just going to give a quick update on how the construction piece is going at Nevada Street, and then the transition to, you know, moving over the summer and occupying the building that was previously occupied by my partner here at Pearl Street. So just really quickly, Josh Morse, he's been great about sending photos and things. I had a few photos just to share with you. The project is well underway. As you can see, some of the interior shots here, they're doing a lot of demo at the moment. The one on the upper right is the former cafeteria, soon to be the Library Media Center. And then the one on the left is the former music room, and that will turn into a cafetorium and after-school space and expanded storage for our PE, and then some other rooms downstairs. And this is, I think, a hallway entrance, but that's happening sort of all over the building, right sizing the rooms and really expanding inside. And then outside, they're laying the foundation for the big piece of the addition, which will be, again, the cafeteria, six classrooms, kindergarten classroom, first grade classrooms. And according to Josh, everything is on time and on budget. So that's good news. And then as far as moving to Pearl Street, I just really want to thank all of the teachers and the custodial staff for all the work that they did this summer, not only packing in June, but then coming in early and probably, I don't know, a week or so, maybe ten days before school started, where just getting, unpacking, finding everything, and getting all set up. Really, they've worked so hard to get set up, and the building looks great. And we've moved in. We've got lots of new logistics that I think we've kind of had to build from the ground up. It's a whole different, in a sort of arrangement to have in the mornings, almost three hundred and fifty, maybe three hundred and forty students getting off of buses and getting them to the right place in a really strange space. And our kindergartners, they're getting used to it now, but everybody's still getting lost, so. But other than that, with minor traffic adjustments and dealing with some of the flow, we've kind of figured it out. So I think we're ready, and we're settling in, and it's a good place to be. So we're really happy and thankful. So that's it for me.
Thank you so much. Maura?
Yes. So I am beyond thrilled to be updating everyone on the newly built Lincoln Elliott. We are thrilled to be there. It's really truly, I hope everyone gets a chance to visit. It truly is a space that reflects the values, energy, and vision of our incredible Lincoln Elliott Leopard community. This has become a little bit of our symbol right now, just leopards on the move, because that's what we have done. I did want, when I had this platform, I did want to take a minute. There are truly too many people to think by name, but I do want to recognize the remarkable collaboration that brought this school to life, and it is an incredible place of learning. From the very beginning, this has been a team effort from the city partnership, central administration, our facilities team, IT, our custodians, our executive assistant, our teachers, our families, and our students. Everyone has worked tirelessly, especially throughout the summer, to make sure we are ready to welcome students this September. No matter when I visited the building, there was somebody there, it could have been a Saturday or Sunday, everyone was working really hard in preparation to welcome our families this September, and it has been a marvelous first week we can have. I've already lost count of school. And you see, I have some pictures there. We now truly have a building that aligns with how we want to teach, a school designed for learning, curiosity, creativity, and connection. Again, please visit us. The library, art room, gym, and music room are nothing short of inspiring. If you look at the picture there, when you first walk in with the green, that picture there to my right is our library, and it truly has become just the heart of the school. You will also see in the bottom picture there, sorry, in the bottom picture there is our mosaic. That was done also in partnership with the city, under the direction of David Fitcher and our wonderful art teacher, Jennifer Sutherland. That is an art piece that was put together by the whole entire Lincoln Elliott community, including families that were able to come in on a Saturday. When you first walk in the building, you'll see people just staring at the mosaic, and the families and the students can actually identify the pieces that they put together. And you're also able to touch it, so it really is like a living art piece. It's just fabulous, and again, really reflects the vibrancy and diversity of our community. I do, again, just want to thank the teachers. They have gone above and beyond, as Mark said about his community as well. They've packed, they've moved, they've unpacked, and they've already started transforming classrooms into second homes for our students. Their dedication and flexibility have been nothing short of heroic. Of course, we still have some punchless items to tackle. That's really expected of a project this size, but we're close. I also wanted to mention that we're in the middle of a traffic pilot, and while much is going smoothly, we've already shared some feedback about parking challenges families are facing, and we're already working in partnership with the city to figure out some additional parking spots. We're confident we'll continue to work through these together. But overall, please thank you so much. We are now in a space that truly reflects and supports the vibrant, inclusive, and forward-thinking Lincoln Elliott community that we are. It's more than a building. It's a launchpad for learning, discovery, and joy. Thank you, School Committee members and community members, for your continued support and for helping making this vision a reality for the Lincoln Elliott community.
Thank you. Thank you both.
Thank you. And can I just say, your running leopards are like hypnotizing. I can't stop looking at them.
And finally, in the superintendent's update, I have given to you my own personal professional goals and my student learning goals for NECC. You don't need to vote on them for a while, but you have them early. So if you have feedback for me, I welcome for you to call me. This is what I hope to achieve, in addition to being responsible for the entire strategic plan. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Thank you. So let's go back to the consent agenda now, now that we've, I believe we've had most of our guest speakers say their part. We have four items on the consent agenda. There's minutes from August twenty-first. There is a memo on gifts, donations, acceptance, a grants memo, and support organization donations for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, and twenty-five, twenty-six budgets for Franklin Day and Newton South High School. Is there anything a member would like to pull from the consent agenda for further discussion? I see Emily.
I'd like to pull the donation request memo. I have a statement to make afterwards.
So number two, the donations.
It's number... And the memo is the amount I'm talking about at number three, but...
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm on the agenda, number two.
You're on the agenda, yes.
Yes, okay, great. Okay. Anything else? Okay. We usually vote the...
We vote the rest of it.
And then we'll... Okay, thank you. Rusty, you know, it's been a long summer. Okay, is there a motion to approve items one, three, and four on the consent agenda? Rajiv?
I saw a move.
Okay. Is there a second to Rajiv's motion?
I'll second it.
Okay, moved by Rajiv, second by Tamika. Any further discussion? Let's take a vote then to approve items one, three, and four. Ward one?
Yes.
Ward two is yes. Ward three?
Yes.
Ward four?
Yes.
Ward five?
Yes.
Ward six?
Yes.
Ward seven?
Yes.
Ward eight is vacant, and Mayor Fuller?
Yes.
Okay, that is eight, zero. And Emily, would you like to go ahead on item number two?
Yeah, just very quick. I came to the donation from the ward families who were generously donating these stools to the older grades, and my initial response was, that goes against the equity policy. It does, as is written. And I'm in no way saying we shouldn't accept this donation, but the fact that that was my response, and then I paused and said, that's totally wackadoodle. What am I doing? So what I just want to put out there, and I feel like every single time we get any of these PTO spreadsheets that we have to approve and the donations approved, I say the same thing, but it's the fall now, and you and I are both on the Policy Committee, and I hope that this is something that we can talk about and bring up, so we can preserve the concept of equity. Pete, I should be very specific about this. I'm talking about PTO equity spending is what I'm talking about. It's about PTO's donations to the district and what is allowed to be donated and what is not allowed to be donated. And over the years, we've now have a rather onerous, like fifty-page document that has everything that is and is not allowed. And I think it's time for us as a district to maintain the concept, and that's in the policy, but take a good, hard look at what the guidelines are and make them easier for PTOs while still preserving the concept of the fact that not every elementary school is able to raise the same amount of money as other elementary schools, and how do we deal with that? And that's all I wanted to say.
Question on that?
Yes.
I apologize, I'm not seeing what you're talking about. I remember reading it. Wasn't it that there were individual families, or was this something else? Individual families, not PTO who donated this. So I read it, and I agree with you. I read it as a bit of an end around for the PTO equity policy. So I think in that sense, yes, we should be consistent in implementing the policy. This is a little funky.
I would say that there have been other times where an individual... and flexibility have been nothing short of heroic. Of course, we still have some punchless items to tackle. That's really expected of a project this size, but we're close. I also wanted to mention that we're in the middle of a traffic pilot. And while much is going smoothly, we've already shared some feedback about parking challenges families are facing, and we're already working in partnership with the city to figure out some additional parking spots. We're confident we'll continue to work through these together. But overall, please thank you so much. We are now in a space that truly reflects and supports the vibrant, inclusive, and forward-thinking Lincoln Elliott community that we are. It's more than a building. It's a launchpad for learning, discovery, and joy. Thank you, school committee members and community members, for your continued support and for helping making this vision a reality for the Lincoln Elliott community.
Thank you. Thank you both.
Thank you. And can I just say, your running leopards are like hypnotizing. I can't stop looking at them.
And finally, in the superintendent's update, I have given to you my own personal professional goals and my student learning goals for NECC. You don't need to vote on them for a while, but you have them early. So if you have feedback for me, I welcome for you to call me. This is what I hope to achieve, in addition to being responsible for the entire strategic plan. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Thank you. So let's go back to the consent agenda now, now that we've, I believe we've had most of our guest speakers say their part. We have four items on the consent agenda. There's minutes from August 21st. There is a memo on gifts, donations, acceptance, a grants memo, and support organization donations for the 2425 school year, and 2526 budgets for Franklin Day and Newton South High School. Is there anything a member would like to pull from the consent agenda for further discussion? I see Emily.
I'd like to pull the donation request memo. I have a statement to make afterwards.
So number two, the donations.
It's number, and the memo is the amount I'm talking about at number three, but.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm on the agenda, number two.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, great. Okay. Anything else? Okay. We usually vote the.
We vote the rest of it.
And then we'll, okay, thank you. Rusty, you know, it's been a long summer. Okay, is there a motion to approve items one, three, and four on the consent agenda? Rajiv?
I saw a move.
Okay. Is there a second to Rajiv's motion?
I'll second it.
Okay, moved by Rajiv, second by Tamika. Any further discussion? Let's take a vote then to approve items one, three, and four. Ward one?
Yes.
Ward two is yes. Ward three?
Yes.
Ward four?
Yes.
Ward five?
Yes.
Ward six?
Yes.
Ward seven?
Yes.
Ward eight is vacant, and Mayor Fuller?
Yes.
Okay, that is eight, zero. And Emily, would you like to go ahead on item number two?
Yeah, just very quick. I came to the donation from the ward families who were generously donating these stools to the older grades. And my initial response was, that goes against the equity policy. It does, as is written. And I'm in no way saying we shouldn't accept this donation. But the fact that that was my response, and then I paused and said, that's totally wackadoodle. What am I doing? Like, so what I just want to put out there, and I feel like every single time we get any of these PTO spreadsheets that we have to approve and the donations approved, I say the same thing. But it's the fall now, and you and I are both on the policy committee, and I hope that this is something that we can talk about and bring up, so we can preserve the concept of equity. Pete, I should be very specific about this. I'm talking about PTO equity spending is what I'm talking about. It's about PTO's donations to the district, and what is allowed to be donated and what is not allowed to be donated. And over the years, we've now have a rather onerous, like 50-page document that has everything that is and is not allowed. And I think it's time for us as a district to maintain the concept, and that's in the policy, but take a good, hard look at what the guidelines are, and make them easier for PTOs while still preserving the concept of the fact that not every elementary school is able to raise the same amount of money as other elementary schools, and how do we deal with that. And that's all I wanted to say.
Question on that?
Yes.
I apologize, I'm not seeing what you're talking about. I remember reading it. Wasn't it that there were individual families, or was this something else? Individual families, not PTO, who donated this. So I read it, and I agree with you. I read it as a bit of an end around for the PTO equity policy. So I think in that sense, yes, we should be consistent in implementing the policy. This is a little funky.
I would say that there have been other times where an individual person has donated to NPS, and to an individual school. And there have been times when the school committee has said, we will accept the donation, but it can't just go to your individual school. It has to be equitable among all the other schools. So if there's a donation of 100 books that happened, a lovely person from service had donated 100 books, that there was a decision to, we'll take that, but we're going to distribute it to all the elementary schools. So yes, this isn't quite about the equity, the equity policy itself, but I feel like the spirit of them both go hand in hand.
Yeah.
Any other thoughts? Emily, I would just like to say, I would love nothing more than to have an equity policy that works. And, you know, this has been a pet peeve of mine for quite some time. But do you, is there a motion then to approve? Okay. Motion to approve by Emily. Is there a second? Rajiv, I beat you to it, Alicia. Okay, moved by Emily, second by Rajiv. Let's take a vote on that. Ward one?
Yes.
Ward two is yes. Ward three?
Yes.
Ward four? Ward five?
Yes.
Ward six?
Yes.
Seven?
Yes.
Eight is vacant. Mayor Fuller?
Yes.
Okay, eight, zero. All right, that takes care of the consent agenda for this evening, and we can move to our second discussion item on school resource officer reporting.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So in accordance with Mass General Law, I have to share with you the SRO MOU that I have with the police chief each year. It is included as a linked item here. It has changed not one bit since the last two years. Second, the Department of Education and the Mass General Law require that I share with you, one, the cost of school resource officers to the school district, the answer is zero. The city funds the police department and the SROs. The paid, the amount we spend as a city on SROs is $328,396. Section two indicates that we have to show how much money we pay for social, emotional learning out of NPS operating accounts and grant accounts, and that amount is $14,765,452. And then finally, it asks us to share with the community the number of school-based arrests, citations, court referrals made in a year, disaggregated as required by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. We had zero arrests, three cases resulting in a summons before a juvenile court magistrate, zero marijuana citations, and 36 cases resolved through referrals or coordinations with counselors. We had 700 incidents across the city involving NPS-aged students where SROs helped to provide support, but it was not a legal action. If you read the back of this document, the officers don't track those instances. You have to request those instances through individual child records if they rose to the level of NPS records. The whole idea of an SRO is to have more informal collaborative scenarios that foreclose more formal legal situations. SROs are trusted adults in the building. They provide instruction. They also, if they need to, provide assistance in court involved their legal situations. But most of the reports involve child victims reporting incidents to trusted adults that then require some sort of follow-up afterwards. We are working internally to see if there's an easier way with existing systems to track those reports at locations for the upcoming year. So as you know, we are completely redoing our data systems and making them work with the police systems. The way that we share information with the police now is through me and the police chief, and that's a formal authorization. So there is no free-flowing review of student records by police officers. That's by design. And that concludes the report.
And just to be clear, there's no vote required or anything. This is just a formal reporting.
I must report this, that I do this to you.
Okay. Comments or questions for Dr. Nolan on school resource officers, SEL? Go ahead, Tamika.
It's not on that. It's a separate thing that I wanted to talk about, so.
Okay. Questions on this? Okay.
I just, I see a new student representative, and in keeping with past precedent, I'd love for him to introduce yourself and let us know who you are. Welcome.
Hi, my name is Tyler Vasquez. I'm a junior at New North High School, and I'm really excited to get to work on the school committee.
Thank you. Welcome, Tyler. Thank you, Tamika. Anna and I were just discussing that before the meeting, and in the midst of all our introductions, we had one slip through the cracks, so apologies, Tyler. Okay, so let's move to our next discussion item, which is our Rights and Responsibilities Handbook and Newton North and Newton South Student Handbooks.
So also required by law, you have to approve the handbooks for both of our high schools. And we in this district have a coordinated centralized Rights and Responsibilities Handbook. Because they constitute the disciplinary and policy and procedures for the district, you have to bless them as they become how we guard students and how we discipline students, and also how we uplift students and how we evaluate students.
Okay. Was there, did anyone have any specific questions on the handbooks themselves?
Next week is your, unless you vote it tonight, next, you can also vote it next week.
Rajiv?
If I could ask for us to vote in the next meeting, they're pretty substantial. I know they're important, and I have to acknowledge, I haven't made it through all of them.
Nor have I, and I would be with you on having that be a vote in our next meeting. Yep.
Are there changes to the documents from last year, and if so, can they be called out?
Jill is still here. You can probably recall it from memory. I can bring you a track change document for the next time. There's not significant changes, so, and if there are, you already know about them from our policy and procedures updates previously, but I will bring you the shorthand.
Yeah, a track change would be great. And maybe just for, we've all got a printed-out copy. Maybe we cannot have a printed-out copy next time. We can live with what we got. And if we need track changes, you can just print out those individual pages or whatever. Okay, so I think we can move on. Our next item is overview of the Five-Year Thrive 2030 Strategic Plan and Evidence of Progress Dashboard.
So Stephen, if you can just put the PowerPoint up, I've just briefly, nothing has changed about the presentation that I made in the spring, launching the strategic plan, except that now administrators have gone ahead and created the actual five-year plan with which deliverables you can expect from us in the next five years. We've also named it the Thrive 2030 Plan. That's how far it will take us. Stephen, if you can go to the next slide. Just a reminder, all of our work is centered around our students, and our students are at the heart of what we do, and our hopes for them in terms of our portrait of a learner are the way we think creates the next generation of leaders and citizens in our country. And our values that were selected by a cross-community team of adaptability, communication, critical thinking, empathy, and having a learner's mindset, set our students up for the brightest future possible, and one in which they can thrive. Go ahead, Stephen. I do link here for the community the full strategic plan and yearly action steps. You can see over the next five years what each of our departments in four-goal areas will be working on. What you can also expect from us as the committee is we will now be doing financial forecasting around those years, so that you can have a more predictable way of budgeting and forecasting what the district will be asking for in a year. Next slide, Stephen. The strategic plan includes our new mission statement. We are an inclusive learning community that empowers all students to thrive as they embrace challenges and shape their futures with confidence, curiosity, and joy. And our vision statement, every student, every day, nurtured, challenged, and empowered. And the core values affirmed by the committee, again, a cross-cultural group, and some of our school committee members and leaders in this room were on that committee, of diversity, love of learning, student well-being, equity, empathy, inclusion, excellence, and opportunity. The desired outcomes for our plan center around four-goal areas, learning and well-being for students, community engagement, finances and facilities, and a focus on human resources. Go ahead, Stephen. So this is a call to action for everyone to live the vision, every student, every day, nurtured, challenged, and empowered. And last slide, Stephen, I think. Welcome back to everyone. Finally, the linked plan that is there, in consultation with the school committee who has given me feedback on it, there is an Evidence of Progress Dashboard, which will become a public-facing website, so that you can see the metrics by which we will be trying to assist our students. Not everything in a school system can be boiled down to a dashboard, but we wanted you to know the important things, like the percentage of students who are reading on or above grade level by third grade and beyond. We think those are important things for you to know. So check out the dashboard. The school committee and I and the leadership team have staggered the creation of some of the metrics. So for example, there are programs that have not yet been created, and ways of looking at our district that have not yet been executed. So they're staggered. So the evidence of progress is by the end of year five. So you'll see that fully executed by the end of year five. And we're really looking forward to talking with the community about those ways of tracking how we're doing.
Thank you. Could you, we talked about this a little bit in our retreat over the summer. Could you maybe just talk for the public and community's sake on the process for developing the things that are ending up on that dashboard?
Sure. So lots of conversations over a two-year period, because remember, we had to delay our strategic plan and Portrait of a Learner, so it was sort of broken out over two years. And as we looked at the areas where our students may have learning gaps, or where we had feedback from the community, or our teachers, or our leaders about things that needed to happen in the school system, all of those were sort of put in the shaker to create the dashboard that is here. For example, there's a lot of interest in the community for people to understand how is our reading program going, and how do we know that students are mastering the literacy standards for the state of Massachusetts every single year until they graduate. Right now, reporting on MCAS is one metric, but it's the only thing we have right now that tells families how students are doing over time. So as you know, for the first time last year, we had some benchmark assessments in math and ELA that we started to put into place. We want to keep reporting to you how that's going across the school system. And you, as the elected representatives of the school system, want that information, because as we advocate for the funding and the programs that are necessary for students to continue to thrive, you're going to need that data about where to put resources, time, and energy. So I'll give you an example of how things, some things are in development. So we created a metric on being college, career, and life-ready. So what does that mean exactly? So we have been, as, you know, we canvassed our school committee in the summer at our retreat and asked for their feedback on things, and got some good feedback from various members. And we're thinking things like, we need to have our media literacy courses very clearly executed, because we think media literacy and research skills in this day and age is very important for our students to have, and it's highly correlated to our Portrait of a Learner standards, the learner's mindset, the critical thinking, et cetera. So that metric is being developed right now, because we do not have media studies across the system in a consistent way, and we do not have our research standards articulated throughout our English Language Arts classes in a very vertically-articulated way. So as you can see, in the next four years, we will develop those things. And at the end of that time period, we think that we can come up with the college, career, and life-ready metric based on those types of programs. So that's just one example. So some are emergent, and some we can give you right away. So for example, tracking participation in advanced courses. Are all types of students having equal access to advanced coursework in our district? Yes or no? How do we know? And we want to tell you about it, because it is an indicator of students having opportunity to advance. So those are just some examples of how it's developed.
Other questions for Dr. Nolan on the strategic plan or the dashboard? Okay. On Ping?
Thanks. I know there are a lot of information, and we probably would not have time to have full discussion about this Thrive 2030 Plan, and especially the dashboard. But I was very, very encouraged. It took tremendous efforts to come up with this plan. I was involved, not probably as much as some of my colleagues and committee members, but I was very impressed, and especially with all the other things going on at that time. So there are a lot of delay. But I'm so happy. It's finally coming to a good shape. And I would really encourage the committee members to pay attention to this, and especially the dashboard. And this, I would say, the first time in my memory that we could come up with this kind of comprehensive and tremendous data collection to put on dashboard. This is a tremendous project. And I know it takes time to finalize this, but I will call this as the strong tease of this Thrive 2030 Plan. Without these teases, to, as a matter of fact, I would not be so confident to talk about this plan. And we probably all have seen some kind of plans, tremendous, wonderful plan, but sometimes for short of our expectation. So I really salute to Doc Nolan and the central team and all the folks who were involved in this plan. And, you know, even though this is my last year on school committee, but I am very hopeful that finally we can work together and have some concrete goals to accomplish. And then we can possibly bring back some glory of the Newton Public Schools, you know, a great accomplishment, which were, you know, let's be honest, which were experiencing some setbacks during the past few years, and we had quite some committee comments about that. It was not easy for school committee members to hear that. But now, I think we have a good chance to work together, especially the new school committee members will be coming along. And so I let me appeal again to the public. Let's all put our attention and working together to meet those goals. They will not be easy, and I know that. And probably will take a little bit longer time. I don't know. But I think this is a great start. And so let's hope that we will see the results in a few years. Thanks.
Thank you. On Ping? And what is, Dr. Nolan, the rough timeframe you have in mind on when this will be available?
Well, when certain metrics are available, really is dependent on, we do benchmarking three times a year. We're developing things like the college life-ready metric now, so that one's not going to be ready for a little bit. So anything that we're ready to do, it will be a this year report out.
Okay. Great. Thank you. All right. If no other questions, we can move on to the next agenda item, summer hiring and personnel salary updates.
So as in previous years, sometimes our staffing needs change after the budget is closed in the spring. This is either due to enrollment increases, student move-ins, student need or programmatic changes. And given that summer enrollment developments and the budget review that occurred when we closed down, we did another review of the budget this summer, and revised the budget book again for submission to the National Association of School Business Officers Meritorious Budget Process. And in doing so, we noticed a few things that we needed to add to the budget that were previously in the budget. And then there were some new developments throughout the summer. And so the following FTE additions have to be made known to you. I do want to just take a moment and congratulate Liam Hurley and his team, however, that on the first submission of the meritorious budget, for the meritorious budget process, the team garnered the crystal award for a strong first draft. So I'm really proud of him and his team for that. This is, of course, a national designation we are seeking about the excellence of the budget from our department. I did check with Chair Bruski three weeks ago, when the additional staffing needs that I'm presenting to you here were. I did check with Chair Bruski three weeks ago when the additional staffing needs that I'm presenting to you here were made real. We had to open school, fully staff. These students were coming. So we did, we did have to make these additions. So two corrections first, a .25 college and career counselor at North. It was vacant last year. It was mistakenly removed from the budget, but it is, it is a needed position. One FTE NISA member was not included in the budget for South at South High School. That was added last year. It didn't make the books this year due to a transfer error and the principal has been out on leave. And since the budget closed, if you flip to this other side, enrollment changes outpaced our elementary plans for classrooms. So a position had to be ordered, added for Mason Rice kindergarten class because it hit the threshold for a full-time aide. And the Bowen Grade Two class rose to classes above 26 into classes at that grade. So the, the required additions are there. Also, I'll say while the full cost of this has not yet been defined, there was an agreement from the Office of Health and Human Services to hire some additional nursing staff or to prioritize nursing staff differently to work through the backlog of students and their immunization papers. So they indicated that if they spend over what they've normally budgeted, they will bill us for this service. So I will bring that to you when I know that amount. These were additions after the budget closed.
Okay. Any questions for Dr. Nolan on that? Mary Fuller?
Remind me, I know we had set aside some possible additional elementary teacher FTEs, but remind me what we did last spring and how that aligns with what we did.
So these two additions are over and above those already being placed.
Got it. Yep. And how, there were three maybe? So we needed all three plus two. Thank you.
Well, plus one teacher and one aide. So.
Rajiv?
The, the additional nursing hours, is, is that to provide immunizations or to review exemption requests or, or both?
Just to work through and, and get the paperwork from all of those individuals.
Okay, thank you. Okay, seeing no other questions, let's move on to the next discussion item, changes to middle school conference schedule.
So currently before you is a trial scenario that the middle school principals in concert with their MTSS steering committee have suggested that we try. A key barrier identified by the teams. So now every, everyone in the district has an MTSS steering team at every building. And the current middle school conference structure, which the feedback indicates, and I'm sure there's a range of opinions, but the feedback that has, has rolled up to our director of MTSS, Maria Colby, who is here, should you want to speak to her, is not experienced as an effective parent guardian engagement structure per se. And it also eliminates six weeks of teaming and time with teams to work together on educator collaborator time every January to March, which by the way, is one of our benchmarking windows. And to implement the district data cycle of inquiry depicted on the newly formed assessment calendar, we want to reexamine that conference structure and there's a recommendation contained here for just the 25, 26 school year. And we would of course, survey before and after all parties, families, staff, principals. But right now, six weeks of team time for teachers to plan, prep and intervene and design instruction is taken over by the conference schedule. The conferences also start in January, which helps when we share mid-year screening data, but then they don't get the, the final information for the final screening. So six weeks after the assessments are completed, educators are unable to unpack that data, use the data protocols and create the, the cycles, which are really the, where the rubber meets the road, if you will, of why we do the assessments that we, we need to be able to intervene for students who need it or to advance students who need enrichment. So we are trying this and we wanted to make a very public announcement so that there was no confusion from, from families. And in February 25, a collaborative workshop occurred to unpack the topic of conferences and the values that we communicate through our conference structures. And that discussion occurred at that meeting, informed the recommendations that are on the second page of the, of the memo that Maria Colby drafted for you. What we hope to do is have a tiered parent model of engagement. And we want to raise the quality of information that we actually provide the parents at the mid-year. And we want to live the values of the profile of a learner, which is forecasted by strategic planning, emphasizing student ownership and engagement of their learning mindset. And so there's a, there's a one-year implementation that would allow us to have a different sort of conference structure. And I'm sure Maria can answer some questions about it if you want to hear more. So some caregivers would have intense, an intense review with students if they had a particular need to show progress and growth. And some caregivers would see an individual mid-year conference with educators with next steps to address those identified gaps. But everyone would receive a listening conference in the fall for sixth grade families. So a call on the phone from someone who's a central person to their team. Progress reports at the end of every marking period. And a, and a middle of the year addendum to the progress report, which would be co-constructed with the student. So the student would be the data that the student, how are the students doing would be shared with them. And goals would be set for their learning and those goals would, would follow the student home to the parent. How'd I do with that, Maria? Good? Okay. So that is the idea. So it's not, we're not talking to parents. It's we're substituting this model while we try something with our families and, and our staff. And we'll take notes and survey data and see how it went.
Questions? Emily?
Good question. And maybe you said this and I apologize if you have already. So is this being implemented this year? Okay. And, and we will, this body will get hopefully an update at the end of the school year to see how it went. Because the middle school conference was like speed dating. So.
Right.
They really are. So was high school. But I'm, I'm happy to, to hear that, that we're making this change. It makes sense to me.
Is there going to be a, or do we have planned like a, a family survey on this or something to?
We will.
Check effectiveness?
Educator as well.
Yeah, both sides.
Would you mind just sharing how, how educators were involved in the process? And Jean is, has also been involved as the secondary administrator here.
Having middle schoolers now, I fully agree with Emily. It's like that 10-minute discussion is like, hi, how you doing? Okay, great.
Yeah, absolutely. So yeah, so I could share a little bit where this kind of, this really came from. So this came from our middle school MTSS steering committee, which has represent, unitary representatives from every one of our middle schools, along with our leaders and assistant principals as well. And that work of that committee really started from looking at our DESI MTSS self-assessment and choosing priority areas that we wanted to dig deeper into. So one of the main areas that was surfaced last year was around the schedule and understanding more about the, the challenges that are faced within the middle school schedule. And so this was one of, as we unpacked how we support students, both in students that require intervention, but also students that require extension, conferences quickly became a topic in multiple meetings. And so this workshop that we did in February was to really think through, okay, so hearing this and, and slightly varied experiences across all four schools in terms of the length of time. But where, when you, when we talk about teaming, that's disrupted during the current model. It, it really is, you know, for anyone who has been an educator, you know, that January to March time, that, that's the magic time, right? Like you come back, you're moving. And to have equivalent of almost two months in which our educators do not get to plan together or have conversations about how students are doing. And yes, unpack data as well, but also just when we understand the power of collective teacher efficacy as the number one thing that drives student achievement, to think that that's off the table for our educators for that length of time. When our return is, you know, it's described as speed dating internally as well, a little bit from some individuals. So this proposal here is a tiered response to a conference schedule that at the core does increase what all families receive from us mid-year and from their student as we think about that learner's mindset to Dr. Nolan's point. So that was the, the process as we went through March. And then, as you all know, we had a few other things that we were doing towards that time of year as we were thinking especially about middle school priorities of specialist and other things. But this recommendation comes to you as, as a step for us to think through what that really high quality family engagement looks like. And, and, and we will need to, yes, survey and gather lots of information.
Yeah, and I just, you know, what I'll add, and thank you, Dr. Colby. What I'll add is that we've been really thinking about how are we going to strategically utilize our resources to, you know, meet all students where they are and, and drive improvement and growth. And so we've invested in the STAR assessment system, you know, where three times a year we are doing formative assessments to understand where students are in relationship to the standards, then identify, you know, the growth, you know, that we see between the fall, winter and, and spring assessments, but also be able to have strategic interventions in place to be responsive to what we're seeing. And so that, and so I look at it as kind of, you know, needing to make a strategic choice. I think that we will always be able to connect with, with, with families, but I think we're, this new way will allow us to do that consistent with a tiered approach. So that there, so all families will, will have, you know, will have contact with their teacher in the beginning of the year. Our teacher teams have already started making advisory phone calls for, to begin to build those relationships. But for our students, you know, where the instructional evidence indicates that we need more intervention, we would be able to prioritize communication with those families in ways that are consistent with the rest of our MTSS program. And, and the, and the idea that, you know, we will be gaining six weeks of collaborative time means, means that when we get our, our winter assessment results, our teachers are going to have a lot more time to work together to interpret those results and then make the instructional adjustments that will accelerate growth to a better degree. I mean, I think we've been doing a good job. You know, I'm really looking forward to seeing what our teachers will do with, with six more weeks of collaborative time to look at information about student learning and, and then make instructional plans responsive to our student needs inconsistent with our MTSS program.
And just practically the time that would be held for conferences with families, because some families will still, of course, have a conference that will not feel like speed dating, will be those last two weeks of February. So just that, that's what's currently held and we have set aside time for that.
Any questions for any of our three people here? Tamika?
So I understand the constraints that you're working within, trying to find extra time in the finite time of the school day and the school calendar. And I think that your approach is both creative and collaborative. I think it does a lot of the heavy kind of upholding to make sure that the folks who need those interventions or those conference times are really going to be prioritized and have valuable, rich, fertile conferences or, or ability to, to talk about their concerns. I'm wondering if as part of this year-long approach, if you're planning to look and see how other districts handle this. Because this is certainly not a, doesn't seem as though it would be very sensible for it to be a Newton-only problem. So how are other districts doing this? Is this something you're seeing handled in other ways, similar ways in other districts? That would be really curious, really interesting to know.
So I, I can respond having, you know, worked in another district. I, I do think that districts have different ways to organize parent conferences. I think that the, the district strategies also, I think, involve collaboration with our union partners. And because oftentimes that the union contract will also articulate where the time for parent conferences come from. And I was 22 years in Boston and it was part of the contract that there would be certain after-school times where these conferences would take place that was collectively bargained. And so I think that's just one example of, of, of ways that, that districts allot time to have strategic partnership conversations with parents. I would also like to add that, you know, nothing will, is, is in our way for a parent who wants to have a conference with their teacher team, you know, to schedule that as we are currently doing. I think this is, this is more just making sure that we are, you know, we are both maintaining, you know, regular communication about student progress and student, you know, wellbeing with parents, while also giving our teachers the collaborative time they need to, to really make a difference in, in terms of seeing what our students know and are able to do through assessments and being really, really strategic about the instructional planning. So we feel like this is going to result in more effective instruction for all students.
Other questions? Okay. Thank you both. Okay. Next item is our school committee calendar for the year, which, you know, does in some part get rolled forward every year, but in some part is also collaborated upon with amongst us during the summer. And we have it partly filled and lots of empty space still. So Dr. Nolan, I don't know if there's specific items you want to hit on there?
Just for the public's knowledge, we vote the dates. So everybody knows what, what days we're going to be meeting. But then we have docket meetings where school committee members rotate in with the chair and vice chair and I to talk about what should be coming up on the agenda. It gives members time to bring forward the things they're hearing from the community, just so that there's a public engagement loop at all times for what's on the agenda. There are some regular things that just have to happen, like quarterly fiscal and ops from Mr. Hurley. And we, it is a fluid document, the, the calendar. So while it's public in its, in its form here, we do make edits to it. So the public should have the expectation that there will be changes and there will be changes often and emergencies come up and we add to them. So it is, it is a fluid document. The things we know right now are here, but watch the space. It could, it could change.
And there was also a request made to the committee by some city councilors to see if we could hold our meetings on a night other than Monday evenings, which I think is, would probably be helpful to our staff as well. I think we determined Tuesday night would be the only possible potential night that could maybe work. And there's going to be some outreach, I think, to some of the, our parent and community organizations to see if that would be a night that would work for them. And then we'll see where that goes. But just so that's on folks radar, that we could, we could potentially have a switch to Tuesday night. It would not be imminent and would be plenty of plans, plenty of advance notice.
So, thank you. In addition to the outreach to parent groups and such, I think it's also advisable to have outreach to boards and commissions who already have calendars full of their meeting days. I know the HRC, which I'm a member of, we meet on Tuesdays. So be sensitive to the need to, A, inform other groups, but also B, just see where the conflicts would, would pop up and how many they are. I think that's a part of our discussion as well.
Yep. Absolutely. That was part of the discussion. It seems like there is probably no night that works for everybody. So.
I had in my mind that Wednesdays was another option. Did I dream that?
Well, because the city council has a lot of their committee meetings on, on Wednesday nights. So it would sort of obviate the.
And also for whoever takes over the facilities piece, the DRC meetings do meet on Wednesdays, Wednesday nights. That's for the school building projects.
You may also just be able to switch. The Wednesday night meetings are, can't remember if it's second and fourth or first and third. I think it's second and fourth. So there may be a way to do it, let's say on the Wednesdays, but just not the same.
On the Kans, yeah, the Kans. Thank you.
Yep. Okay. So more, more to come on that. We'll see where that goes. But just so folks aren't caught off guard if there's a, a change down the road.
So here you're just voting the actual dates. If you are voting.
Yes, Paul.
I was going to make a motion to approve the calendar as submitted.
Motion to approve from Mr. Levy. Is there?
Second pass.
Okay. Okay. So we have a motion by Paul to approve and a second from Emily. Is there discussion on that motion?
I'm totally fine with the dates. I do think the discussion of a pre-Labor Day start should be moved up. I know that's an agenda item thing, but I think we should talk about it at our next opportunity because I know people are going to start camps and whatnot before we would vote the exact stuff, so.
Okay. Thank you. Any other?
So let me just poll the committee. That would be something that I would take the policy subcommittee to create the policy first. So do you want me to fast-track that and just, so I'll pull the policy committee together sooner rather than later? Okay. Got it.
Rajiv?
I'm, I may not be here for the meeting that will take place on Diwali, but I know it's an, uh, acknowledged holiday, not a, not an observed one. So, just a heads up.
Putty?
Benny?
Thank you. Okay, yep. Okay. Other questions, comments? Uh, so motion from Paul, seconded by Emily, let's take a vote on that, Ward one?
Yes.
Ward two is yes, Ward three?
Yes.
Ward four?
Yes.
Ward five?
Yes.
Ward six?
Yes.
Ward seven?
Yes.
Ward eight is vacant, Mayor Fuller?
Yes.
Okay, that passes eight to zero. And we can move on to our final agenda evening for this evening, which is the MASC conference delegate to.
Brimming with excitement, I think.
To represent the Newton School Committee. This is your opportunity to represent the Newton School Committee in beautiful Hyannis, Massachusetts.
You forgot sunny.
Sunny, always sunny in Hyannis, uh, in November, lovely time of year.
It actually is.
Lovely timing, it's, it's possible, it could be a lovely time of year. Uh, so we, as far as I am aware, do not yet have a, um, volunteer to represent us at the conference. I don't know if anyone knows the answer of what happens if we do not have a delegate? Is that a, uh?
We lost it.
We don't have a delegate. I mean, there are times when, so there was one time I was supposed to go there and I got sick and I couldn't go. So it's not, it's not the end of the world.
Um, a thought, if that's okay, um, there's an election on Tuesday, November 4th. You may get a, one of the new school committee members to consider if you can wait that late.
I don't think they can vote. No, not in.
I'm sure they can.
Yeah, that's the thing.
Oh. Yep. Good thought, good thought though. Okay.
Not allowed to vote anyway.
Well.
What are the dates again, Lisa? Because.
November 12th to the 14th. And just for the, uh, for the public's information, this is a annual conference of the Massachusetts Association of School Committees. Um, it culminates in a vote amongst all the delegates there for resolutions of the MASC, which have absolutely no force and effect of any kind. And.
In all fairness, I gotta, I gotta put in a pitch for this. In all fairness, MASC has a political agenda, they have a day on the Hill. They go meet with many legislators, um, and, and there has been times when I don't necessarily agree with how the, the delegation, you know, voted and what, what they, what they, because it, for Newton, it's not something that we necessarily agree with. And so you don't go to, you don't go to that person's office to talk about that when it's a day on the Hill. So, I mean, i- it, it's, um, it's worth going to. I've done it three times out of my six years here. Um, it is fascinating to talk to people from other districts, some of whom are very similar to ours and some of whom are wildly different. And yet still, we all have things in common in terms of what challenges our districts are facing. I think it's a worthwhile thing. It's a lovely area, the hotel is lovely, everyone is nice, the food is good. I, 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 I just, I'm just going to put that out there.
It sounds like it could be, it sounds like it could be a fourth year out of six, if you're interested. Emily? Alicia?
Emily, tell us if all three days are required?
Not at all.
Or the subset of days?
Not at all. And in fact, I, I, I have done it where I've been there, I've shown up on the day that the voting is going to be happening.
That's the critical day.
And then, and then you can stay overnight, it's lovely hotel, and then you drive the next day.
And the resolutions happen on Friday, right? The final day?
Uh, yes, this year, they have changed in, in other years, but I'm pretty sure it's Friday.
Also a conference, if you're interested in going and, yeah, there are workshops.
Same topic.
Very much so.
You think so?
Uh, Chris? Not a chance. Uh, so let's, uh, let's do this.
Cities that share the days, so one good, one person goes one day, one another.
Anping, did you?
Yeah, Chris, uh, I just want to echo, uh, what Emily said. I went twice and it was quite atmosphere. And I would encourage people, if they want to learn what's going on statewide, this is a wonderful opportunity. Meet a lot of people. And I happened to meet some people, uh, uh, folks from the Lexington School Committee. If I recall correctly, all of the members joined the, uh, this, um, conference. And I believe that, uh, you know, the town paid the, the expenses for, for staying hotel. That was very nice. And I don't think we even got some kind of, uh, stipend for the lunch or something. I could be wrong, Emily, you correct me if, did we get anything? But, you know, it, it's wonderful opportunity. And, um, again, I would encourage folks, if they haven't been there, you know, meet some people. And Alicia certainly, he want to consider this, make some, uh, uh, friends and acquaintances and learn what's going on in other districts. Um, nice town, a nice facility, so.
Right, thank you, Anping, so.
Put things on that.
Yes.
If you would be willing to be a delegate, I would be willing to be the alternate. And that way we might be able to work something out.
I can make that work, I just cannot attend all three days.
Nor can I, because Friday is my birthday, so. And Friday, so between us.
Okay, wow, look at that.
And, and I would strongly suggest that you go to some of the conference, um, sessions. I mean, there's, there was one, it was so telling, last, uh, last year or the year before, I think it was the year before, was all about, um, PR and PR firms who work with school committees and what to do when the proverbial poop hits the fan. And then there's been discussions about, and I talked to Ann about it actually as a follow-up. Um, uh, uh, God, I'm totally blanking on the word. Uh, the, uh, the collectives, right? Um, and, and how, how we can leverage that and mental health and, I mean, it's, 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 they're fascinating things. And they're driven by members who are school committee members. And so it's their personal stories and the things that they can go through. So totally recommend it, so happy. It's not me, I'm so happy. That is you, because I think it's going to be a great opportunity, honestly, for both of you.
Okay.
Have done it before, by the way.
Well, it sounds like. Paul?
Like to make a motion to, um, designate Alicia as our, uh, delegate and Tamika as the alternate.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I second.
Okay, any further discussion? Let's go quick before they change their minds. Ward one?
Yes.
Ward two, yes. Ward three?
Yes.
Ward four?
Better be sunny, yes.
Ward five?
Yes.
Ward six?
Yes.
Ward seven?
Say no, right?
Yes, yes, yes.
Uh, Ward eight is vacant, Mayor Fuller? Is yes, okay. So congratulations and thank you to Alicia and Tamika for taking on this honor. That concludes our agenda for this evening. Happy upcoming 30th birthday and we are adjourned.